Would you please rise for the pledge?
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. It's nice to see a full chamber this evening. We're glad that you're here. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Aspacher.
Here.
Gavron.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
Zaffordino.
Here.
The minutes from the regular meeting that was held on May 2nd, 2016, were distributed to council prior to this meeting. Are there any amendments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes. Distributed to you prior to the meeting was the financial budget summary report for the month of, yeah, for April 2016. And that just needs to be noted for the record. That's all.
Thank you, Kay. Moving into our official reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I wish to begin my report this evening with a brief tribute to the Honorable Delbert Latta, who died last week at the age of 96. Congressman Latta served his country so honorably as a member of the armed services in World War II, as a member of Congress for 30 years, as a member of the Watergate Commission during a critically important time in the history of our country, and as a member, and this is something very special to me, of the second class of Buckeye Boy State. I respectfully request that you stand and join with me in a very brief period of silence, out of respect for this long time and distinguished member of our community. Please. Thank you ever so much. Mr. President, members of council, as you well know, this is a very special time for us because we can celebrate the promotion of three of our fire division, members of our fire division here, their promotion to lieutenant. And it's, I think it's wonderful that we can do this at a city council meeting. I think it's important to have a public embrace of this kind where these people who serve so unselfishly for the best interests of our community help us out each and every day of our, of our community, life in our community. And they've done it so honorably, and I know you share with me, and all of us should share in the admiration of our fire division, as well as our police division, of course, because there are only five or six police and fire divisions in the whole state of Ohio that have international accreditation, and that certainly speaks well of our fire division, as well as our police division. And of course, the police division will say, well, we were first, but we like all the hard work that went into, because the fire division worked at it for a good number of years, and it won't be long now, we'll be coming up for re-accreditation, but it really speaks well of our, our community. So at this time, I'm going to ask each of the individuals who are up for a promotion, have been approved for a promotion to the rank of lieutenant, to come forward with members of their family. I'm going to ask Lori Treter, our municipal administrator, to join with me, and of course, our fire chief, Tom Sanderson. And I think if you can, if you look around the room a little bit here, you'll see these three officers here, some of their, I call them their mates, their colleagues, are here, and that also speaks about the importance and the kind of feelings that they have for each other and how they work so closely together. And I'm really pleased to see you guys in the back there joining with us for this special act of celebration here. So the first person I'm going to have call forward here, and bear with me for just a second so I can get my notes here, will be Ryan Patton. He's, will be joined by his wife Jill, his son Chase, and his daughters Megan and Jessica. I'm just going to ask, just state after me. If you would please hold your right hand. I, Ryan Patton.
Aye, Ryan Patton.
Swear that I will uphold.
Swear that I will uphold.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
City of Bowling Green.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office to which I have been appointed.
Of the office to which I have been appointed.
Congratulations, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. And I believe you. Jessica is going to do the honor. Don't stick your dad. Oh, well done. And next I'm going to call forward here, Brad Fien, his wife Heidi, his daughter Ellie, and his son Cohen. Brad, if you would please hold your right hand and say after me. I, Brad Fien.
I, Brad Fien.
Swear that I will uphold.
Swear that I will uphold.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And now I invite to step forward Jason Wilkins, his wife Haley, daughters Kaylee and Emmy. And are your parents here? Yes, chief? Chief, thank you so much for coming over. The chief of Defiance Ohio, right? Jason, please hold your right hand and say after me. I, Jason.
I, Jason.
Wilkins. Swear that I will uphold.
Swear that I will uphold.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
City of Bowling Green.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Jason, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, would you like to say anything for these three wonderful individuals here? Please.
Thank you, Mayor, members, members of council and all assembled who support the fire division. We appreciate your support. Very proud of these three people, as I am all the members of the fire division. These three have well into their careers. They're solid firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, and all natural leaders, and I'm glad to have them move up at this point in their careers because they are the future of the fire division, and we're all glad to have them. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief, and congratulations to you all. Mr. President, members of council, I just have one other bit of business here this evening, and that's the appointments to city boards and commissions. It's something that we do, particularly at this time of the year, and we will be, have some additional ones coming to you, probably in preparation for your, the next meeting of council. But I'm told by our wonderful clerk of the, of the city council that I must read these into the record to be official. Is that correct?
It's the best way.
Okay, so you have to bear with me here. As of May 31st, numerous boards and commissions' terms will expire. Over the next few council meetings, we will be sharing appointments and reappointments for your confirmation. So these appointments will be tonight, and they'll be effective starting on June 1st, subject to your approval. The reappointments that I'm recommending to you for your consideration, the Audit Committee, Bill Culberson, four years, and his term expiring on May 31st, 2020. And he has been serving, as I said, these are all reappointments. The Bicycle Safety Commission, Karika Bux, for one year, and for her term expiring on May 31st, 2017. Greg Dickerson, for a three-year term. His term will expire on May 31st, 2019. And Ethan Ferguson, one-year term, and will expire on, by, May 31st of 2017. The Board of Public Utilities, Bill Culberson, who's been serving on that board for a number of years, and had even served as chair of that group for some period of time. A five-year appointment for beginning, ending on May 31st, 2021. The City University Relations Commission, I'm very grateful that Julie Broadwell, and I think she was here just a little bit ago, has agreed to stay on for a two-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2018. Daniel Gordon and Barbara Rowland for a two-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2018. The Human Relations Commission, Allison Baker, student at the high school, for a one-year appointment, May 31st, 2017. And Margaret Montague, who is here, three-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2019. Margaret, thank you so much for your service on the commission. The Parks and Recreation Board, Jeff Crawford, for a five-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2021. The Planning Commission, Gary Hess. Dr. Hess is here, and thank you, Gary, for your very dedicated service to the planning commission. It's a six-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2022. The Tree Commission, Torrance Leek, a three-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2019. And the Zoning, the Board of Zoning Appeals, Chris Oberstrowski, a four-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2020. Now, we have new appointments here. The Audit Committee, Teresa Charter-Gavron is going on to represent the city council after, for a four-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2020, and she will fill the seat vacated by Bob McCumber. And Bob, thanks for your good work on that very important audit committee, and you don't meet that often, but when you do, it's important, so. You heard that, right? Not too often, so we won't be calling on Teresa. The Bicycle Safety Commission, I'm really pleased that we've been able to entice Dr. Steve Langendorfer for a one-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2017. Steve has been a member of the commission a good number of years, has worked so hard, but he had to go off because he was term limited, but he, since that time has passed, he can go back on, so he's coming on at least for, for one year here to succeed Rob Klein, who's been, been a member of the commission since 2011. He recently resigned due to a job change in university life, and, and of course, I've already covered about Steve being an active member of the community regarding bike safety, as well as complete streets, and he previously served on the commission. Originally, he was appointed in 2004. The Human Relations Commission, we have a new student who will be representing the university, Morgan Hollensworth, a one-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2017. Morgan has been recommended to fill the seat left vacant by Cameron Stewart, who really served so faithfully on the, on the commission. He was recently graduated and will be moving on, we hope for him, and that he'll be going into the world of law enforcement. And Morgan did attend the May meeting of the Human Relations Commission, and she seemed to be quite eager to, to serve on the commission. She's from Anderson Township, a suburb of Cincinnati, and she's a, would be entering her sophomore year at BGSU studying speech and language pathology. The Planning Commission, I'm recommending for your consideration, the appointment of Judy Ennis for a six-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2022. Judy Ennis fills a seat vacated by Julie Burton, who was term limited, but Julie served for so many years very faithfully on that, on the planning commission, and also was a representative to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Judy is a longtime resident of Bowling Green and a very active volunteer. She previously served on the Behavioral Connections Board, the Adamas Board, and downtown, and the Downtown Bowling Green Foundation. Additionally, as you will recall, and Bruce, since she was co-chair with you of the Future Land Use Planning Committee, and, and she also had served on the Zoning Board of Appeals previously, so, but this is, represents, in a sense, your thrust, Bruce, to keep the ball rolling on the, on the Future Land Use Planning, all your good work there. The Transportation Advisory Committee, Kristi Gray, has been recommended for, is being recommended for a three-year appointment, ending on May 31st, 2017. Kristi Gray will fill the unexpired term of Catherine Harnard, her colleague at the Wood County Hospital, and, but Catherine recently resigned from the committee. Kristi Gray is Vice President of Development for the Wood County Hospital. And last, the Transportation Advisory Committee, Melanie Stretchberry, is being recommended to serve for a three-year term, ending on May 31st, 2018. Melanie just recently retired as superintendent of Wood Lane, and she will be filling the unexpired term of Vic Gable, her, her colleague there at Wood Lane, who recently resigned from the committee. We know Melanie is a longtime resident of Bowling Green, and of course, her service with, with Wood Lane and her work on the, on ever so many things, and currently, right now, she is very much involved with the, the Parks Levy program, as Kristi, Kristin Ottley will attest to. We have some ex-official members that will be serving, the Bicycle Safety Commission, Kristin Ottley, Human Relations Commission, Lieutenant Dan Mancuzzo, Records Commission, Jackie Spendenberg, the finance office here with the city, and the Transportation Advisory Committee. And John, we're grateful to you to be serving in that role there, John Zaffordino. Mr. President and members of council, that concludes my report, unless you might have some questions of me.
Other questions for the mayor? Very good. Is there a motion to approve the reappointments and appointments as presented by the mayor?
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The appointments, reappointments, approved as presented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter.
Good evening. President Aspacher asked that I clarify for you the business before council about the Parks Levy. We have two pieces of legislation, one that's up for third reading and one that is sitting on the table. We ask that you consider passing the one that's up for third reading tonight, and then at the next meeting of council, excuse me, it should be the first meeting in June, that you remove the other one from the table and pass it. That will allow our clerk to take that, that information over to the auditor, and then after that, it will go through the Board of Elections. And that's all I have this evening.
Questions for Ms. Treter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Evening. I normally don't have a report, so this should be really good. I just wanted to make sure you knew that Lisa Evans had officially retired at the end of March. She's our administrative secretary, so it was a big loss to the city. She's been here for, you know, well over 30 years. But we did welcome a new employee. Her name is Jamie Komenek. She started today. We're very excited to have her as part of our team. This person interfaces a lot with the community over the phone and in person, so if you could give her a warm welcome, we'd really appreciate that. We're very excited to have us, have her as part of our team. Just want to let you know, too, Planning Commission approved an S District site plan for Meyer to have a new Huntington Bank ATM constructed. As you recall, about two years ago, we changed that process to no longer have council as the final say, so I wanted to make sure I let you know that Planning Commission did approve that on May 4th. Additionally, zoning permits, we haven't reported on those in a while. We are down slightly this year. We've issued 108 so far this year compared to 121 at this time last year, and we've issued nine single-family house permits, and that is compared to 14 as of this time last year. Just a reminder, grass is a big issue right now in the city. We do have to have, you know, we have an ordinance. Eight inches or taller is the regulation, so if you don't mind helping us out, if you do see a grass that you may think is too tall in your area, please let us know. You know, we only have one coenforcement officer, so we have a lot of work at this point in time. We also wanted to let you know, this is my last day here until I leave for Chicago for the National Town Gown Association Annual Conference. Really excited about this. It's at Loyola University on the, on Michigan, Lake Michigan, and it's going to be held June 5th through the 8th, and I can't wait to bring you back some reports about some best practices of college towns. It's always a great conference. There's always really great information, so I'm excited about that. Additionally, I will be presenting on Not in Our Town Bowling Green, so this is a great way to highlight the Bowling Green community. I wanted to bring you my presentation, just to see, so you can see a copy. And so anyways, I cannot wait to bring you information about that. It'll be very, very exciting. So again, getting us on the map. Also want to let you know, Not in Our Town Bowling Green has a new project, project, and I have two volunteers that are going to talk about that very briefly. Again, we're just trying to continue our outreach in the community and our visibility. So if you don't mind, Margaret Carroll, want to come up and talk about your project? Very brief. If you have any questions, just please let me know.
Didn't know we were going to get up here. Well, what we volunteered to do is, there's an initiative to go to the businesses in Bowling Green and make sure they know about Not in Our Town. If they don't, to briefly do sort of the elevator speech about it and ask if they would put a window cling of the logo of Not in Our Town on the front of their business, just to sort of show support for this, and just to make it more visible for everyone. So Margaret and I have volunteered to do that. So we're working with Heather about whether to do sort of cold calls or, you know, talk to them ahead of time. But we did get a list of businesses tonight from her, and we're going to be starting to work on that.
Have any input as to more effective, the most effective ways of doing that? Certainly let us know that.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Well, it's May, so we have quite a few things going on, but my report will be brief, so don't worry. But non-resident registration starts today for all of our summer stuff, so it's open for all, and we are quite busy with that today, which is great. Do want to remind you, and if anyone does not have a hard copy of these, hit me up after, but the foundation's fundraiser at Stone's Throw is next Wednesday, May 25th. All you have to do is show up and eat and drink and give them one of these, and they will give the foundation 15%. You do have to actually show the hard copy. You can't just show it on your phone, so that's why that's kind of important. Our project out at Winter Garden, the Building on Nature Project, I have pictures from about 4:00 today, so I'll pass these down, but it is very close, and May even, knock on wood, will be done next week. So we look forward to the first flushing of the toilets out there and, and our staff being able to move their equipment over and, and help them to be more efficient. But really, the flushing of the toilet will be quite exciting, so. We will look to do an official ribbon cutting later in the summer, when everything is good to go for the building, yes, so. Our last of the community focus group meetings is this Wednesday, May 18th, and this one is the future directions, and it will be a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. So if anyone is interested in that, please come. And once again, if someone cannot make it, they can email Dr. Orr directly, and a lot of citizens have been taking advantage of that. She has received many emails, so we look forward to then getting the information from she and her grad students and kind of moving forward with our five-year master plan, so. And other than that, probably most exciting to some people here is May 28th, the pool will open, so, assuming that the weather cooperates. So that's, I'm going to keep saying that, and hopefully it'll jinx us into good weather because typically Memorial Day weekend is not good swimming weather, so maybe this year we'll luck out. So that is all that I have, unless you have any questions.
Kristin, can you tell us if there's a deadline on, or like when the deadline is for comments to be sent to Dr. Orr?
You know, that's a good point. We'd really like to have them right around this last meeting, so sometime this week or maybe into next. I don't believe that she has set one, but they're going to compile all the information and get it to us, and then with staff and board, you know, we want to get that together and really have something conclusive end of, kind of mid to late August. So the sooner the better, but I mean, if somebody sends something after everything's compiled, she can certainly forward that on, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Kristin? Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mike? Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Questions for Mr. O'Connell? Brian? Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft. Questions for Brian? Thank you. Okay, that concludes our official reports. Thank you, everybody. We're going to skip over the introduction of new legislation on our agenda. We have no new legislation today. Are there any council committee reports?
Mr. President?
Mr. Gordon?
The Community Improvement Committee met earlier tonight to discuss proposed revisions to Chapter 94 of our city code regulating refuse and recycling collection. I think we had a very good discussion about where we would like to head with that, and some recommendations were made for the administration to follow up on, as well as an effort among committee members to individually suggest changes that they heard from city residents who had spoken during the meeting, that they liked to also forward to the administration in anticipation of a future meeting to go over a final version.
Very good. Thank you, Daniel. Any additional council committee reports? Seeing none, we move forward to the section on our agenda where we allow for lobby visitation. It's my understanding that we have had a request from a group, the People of Engagement, BG, did I say that right? Like to make a small presentation. We welcome you to do so at this time.
I don't either.
September keighley night, 431 South Prospect. Good evening, council members, city leaders, and all assembled. and all assembled. On March 6th, I sent you each an email introducing myself and sharing some of the concerns about our current garbage and recycle container placement. I want to thank those of you that responded to my email and thank all of you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a proud townie. I grew up in BG, was a Bobcat graduate, did my undergrad and graduate work here, and I currently teach first grade at Krem Elementary. When we purchased our first home, we knew we wanted to stay here in BG, and in particular, we wanted to be in or near the heart of downtown. We enjoy a frequently occupied spare bedroom of guests and knew that our home on Prospect would allow us visitors, allow us and our visitors, an easy walk to the downtown restaurants, shops, and activities. It was on these walks to downtown along Prospect that it quickly became apparent to us that the aesthetics and the charm of our town is being compromised by something that could be easily rectified, the placement of garbage and recycling containers in front yards. In the email, I also included several pictures showing examples of the conditions we have observed that, quite frankly, when we've been walking with guests have been embarrassing. Now that I have seen the proposed changes to Chapter 94, there are changes and additions that I believe are positive for our town, like the carry-out, carry-back service for citizens that need assistance. But 94.5B, the section concerning the container storage location and diagram, need to be reconsidered. The verbiage in this section and Zone A on the diagram allow for containers to be placed anywhere in front of the home as long as it's within five feet of the structure. This does nothing to resolve the conditions in the photographs, but by removing one word, the word "front," removing that word from this section could have a significant impact on the curb appeal of our town. And I know that we had, the committee had discussed some changes, but I would really recommend that you get rid of the word "front" altogether so that it says "side" or "behind." Several months ago, when we became involved with PEBG, it was through the group that we were introduced to this document, the City Improvement Plan. This truly is a fantastic document, and everyone on the BG Plan Steering Committee should be commended for their work. On pages 17 and 18 are the seven principles, BG principles. Number two, a positive, appealing first impressions. By removing that word "front" and requiring containers to be stored within five feet of the side or rear of a dwelling, guests at BG will experience positive, appealing first impressions, and the council will have taken a critical step toward putting this improvement plan into action. Please consider removing the word "front." Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. I'm Warren Young again. I'm going to talk to you about BG. Button. There we go. This is a map of what I put together from, obviously, the city plan, and the PEBG participants canvassed the neighborhoods, and for the sake of time, I'm just focusing on the northeast side. There are many concerns here, including but not limited to garbage cans on porches, extra garage bag, garbage bags on the ground, upholstery, household furniture on porches, construction materials, improper placement of commercial dumpsters, broken-down cars, tires, washing machines, and other trash placed around the house and apartments within plain sight. All the areas there that are circled are those extra issues beyond having the container in front of the house. So I'm going to show you some of the pictures here. Here is the land use plan as it's being presented. Again, this is meant with all due respect, the comments here tonight, this is not meant to create any animosity or to project any kind of issue. This is meant to be showing the relationship to what is presented and what's a reality as a form of visual explanation, all right? Again, we appreciate the effort that this ordinance is being relooked at. So here we have, again, placed in front, and here we have some homes that have the garbage cans in front. Go ahead and hit the, and then here we have some more with on the side and extra things around. And this is, the thing that I want to point out is the document, the plan that we had done was with an hour and a half of Bowling Green on a Saturday, so this was not within the collection time period. And a lot of these items, especially the ones, the tires, the cars, the washing machines, the garbage in the trucks that are being used as storage devices, have been there for months. This is not something that has just happened. Go ahead. Here we have another one. Again. All right. Yeah, that's all I have. So I just want to mention that this is a growing issue, and we can go through here some more. And of course, I have this plan that's available to share with any of the city council, anybody at the city that would like to have it. And this is, and this is where Jenny's going to talk.
My name's Jenny Stewart, and I reside at 1249 Brownwood Drive. The current plan stands, the plan currently stands, and it doesn't represent many of the homes on the east side, and the garages are in the back of the property. However, these examples represent a growing issue and by no means are isolated to the east side. These images are on the west side. This image we've all seen, it's on Church Street right behind us, and it's not a very pleasant entry to our city administration building, to our library, areas that receive quite a few visitors. This is the building that has been referred to many times this evening on Clay Street, where garbage cans are, and garbage are not only on the front of the house, they're on the side of the house. There are grocery carts, and if you go along the side of the house, I'm not sure we have a picture of that, there are at least 30 garbage bags that are being hidden by vehicles. And this is in access from Main Street to our city park, to a section of the town where there are stores, where visitors from other communities come to visit. We hope that this presentation to the city council and the administration show that there is more regulation that is needed, and it is needed to make this plan speak to what is stated in the land use plan. We have driven through neighboring communities and around this area and have looked at their ordinances regarding this issue, and these communities have somehow managed their ordinances in such a way that their neighborhoods present a positive image for and about the community. And we hope that as you consider a new plan for garbage, trash cans, litter, that you will consider what other surrounding areas are doing and address these issues before you make your final plan. And as a result, the new proposal will do for other cities what this proposal could do for us. We thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Can you guys route the, these pictures to us, or certainly the one diagram that you went around would be really good to see?
Sure.
Not the photos necessarily, but there was the one image that was just houses with notations of-
Right, the maps with the notations, yeah, yeah. And unfortunately, these, this map is probably a month or two old from when we did it, and yet the conditions still exist. So it's not as if anything has been cleaned up, changed, rectified.
I just want to say one more thing, real quick. I know everybody's probably anxious to get out of, just real quick. A lot of people say, and I've heard this said, and being a professor at the university, I hear constantly people saying, well, they're students, what do you expect? You're living in a community where students are. I just want to remind people that Bowling Green State University has a mission statement that is, that talks about how they are creating students that'll be responsible citizens. With the communities that Jenny Stewart and I have looked at, including Toledo, they believe that by making good citizenship is by helping them, the citizens, understand what the law is and what the ordinances are. So they send out constant reminders, and they educate their young population to know what the parameters are. If they don't have parameters, they will do whatever they want, and they make no excuses for it. So again, I would probably suggest that looking at the code enforcement and how it's being enforced and supporting and helping these young people be good citizens within BG, and they will be good citizens wherever they end up. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your comments and taking the time to put that together. Certainly, it's informational and instructive, and we thank you.
Mr. President, comment. I also want to say I appreciate the meeting we had before this meeting from the, from the committee, and I feel it best for me personally to try to follow your lead on this and more respond to things, the issues that you bring up, and you're doing a really good job of clarifying things, and especially right there at the end when we had the diagram and the lines, that was good stuff. I also want to thank your group for presenting these pictures and some of your concepts. Very helpful. And Mr. Marsh, I would like to put you on the spot. Just the one picture is very disturbing on Clay. I know that the Health Department is involved in some enforcement, and we have our own code enforcement. Could you maybe clarify a little bit how a situation like that is handled, particularly with a bunch of garbage bags sitting around?
I don't know if that place in particular, maybe, you know, you know, if that one's been referred to Health Department yet. And it goes through the municipal prosecutors, prosecutors, if it comes to that.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
If I could just add something. I know you're going to reconsider the legislation that you heard tonight as a Community Improvement Committee, and I know that the three of you will be very thoughtful in what you add, but I would certainly like to make it as simple as possible also. And I know we're hearing a lot of ways to make it simple. Don't use the word "front," "front yard." But I like the idea of just saying what most people do, and that's put the garbage cans either in your garage or out back, and only in circumstances where it cannot be done are they allowed to even put it on the side of the house. So just keep it out back, keep it in the garage, and only if there's no way to possibly put it to the side of your house, or to the back or garage, are they allowed on the side.
Other comments?
I would just say again, echoing some of the comments that have already been said, thank you for coming and weighing in with your thoughts on the severity of the problem and ways of fixing it. You know, I have confidence that we'll get this right, and, you know, I don't know if we're going to be able to completely eliminate the problem, but I think there are steps that we can take to better remedy it and alleviate most of the concerns over time that you're seeing. So thank you again.
Are there others who would like to address city council this evening? Please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Rose Hess, 216 Baldwin Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay. This is a hard act to follow, and you touched one of my points, but I'm going to concentrate on another point. And thank you for giving us this opportunity, council members, visitors, city staff, and Senora Marsh and Senora Edwards. Have a little homework for Senora Marsh here tonight. Pass out, and a little homework here for Robert. Brian, I really appreciate all the time and effort that went into the revising. It really was impressive. But I was upset with 9405, and it sounds like you've already addressed some of my concerns. And I think you saw from these pictures here that garbage containers are an eyesore, even if you paint them. Scottsdale, Arizona forbids anything except pink, but I don't know if we want to go to that extreme. That is true. But I think you can see that garbage containers are an eyesore, and it doesn't matter if you're in the middle of the front yard, the back of the front yard, the front of the front yard. They don't belong there, and the fact that someone neatly puts them right by the garage, it doesn't make them any more appealing. And I, too, would like to refer, as was referred by someone in your group, that the land use update report that we received two years ago stated that some of the changes recommended for our city are imperative, was the word that they used. And among these are, this, this is what we have to do. We have to become, Heather will bear this out, more visually appealing and marketable, because she and I have had a discussion about this. Do you really think that allowing containers to be stored in the front is making your neighborhood and my neighborhood more visually appealing? I love to dig around. I'm not one to reinvent the wheel. And I'm always asking, what are other towns doing? Well, I wasn't really, well, by Perrysburg, but I did some digging on my own, and I looked at about 75 codified ordinances. Took me a while. But I did find a great site that lists all the cities alphabetical. And I only looked, of course, at those in Ohio, and they ran, this was very random. First, I started out with As, and I thought, gee, I'll never get through the As. And then I went to Bs. I kind of hopped around, and then I started looking at cities that I wanted to just check out on my own. They were small rural towns. There were college towns, a couple of large cities. It was very random. I looked at 25, and I came up with 25 towns and cities that you have in your hand. They have already in place, or they have recently amended their container ordinance. They simply ban them in the front yard. This is just the tip of the iceberg. I have 25 on that list. I mean, I couldn't give you 75 if I kept on going. We're not alone in dealing with this problem. The language may differ, the message is the same. No garbage containers can be stored in the front of the house. Kent just changed theirs. In fact, it wasn't even on their website, but I dug around because I had heard that they had made a change, and I found that it was an amendment, Exhibit A. And so they now forbid them from the front. Youngstown, I believe, just did theirs last year, too. Now, I would, I'm not going to read all of these with you, but I would like to go over a few of them. We seem to be so hung up on language, and there is a way to do this. You get around handicapped, you get around the weather. You, there are ways to deal with this, and I think you have to look and see what other towns are doing. Look at Kent. It simply says, "All receptacles shall be stored behind the front edge of the house, except when they're at curbside for pickup." That's it. Warren, Ohio, they have to be stored in an appropriate side or backyard position. I'm not reading all of these. Look at Delfosse, Ohio. "No garbage or refuse container shall be stored or placed in front of the front building line of any property at any other time than when garbage is picked up." Fairborn, a town I never even heard of. Have you?
My son lives there.
Oh, all right.
I've heard of it, been there.
Now I have. I'm not familiar with southwest Ohio, I guess. "All containers may be stored anywhere other than the front yard of the premises, promises, premises." And I have found several that have this in theirs, and you can't put them under the eaves, because a lot of times the eaves leak and water gets in the containers if they're not covered. Fosteria recently passed an ordinance. "Consumers must be stored behind the front exposure of the structure." Garfield Heights, can't be permitted to remain in the front of the house at any time. Lima just passed, well, no, theirs is about 2007. "Receptacles, containers should not be placed within the front yard setback." I'm giving this to you just to show you how, how it's worded, and we can come up with our own wording. Lynnhurst was very detailed, and I couldn't even put it all on here. "Receptacles, containers should not be placed within the front yard setback, which is the entire area from the sidewalk. They may be placed along the side or rear of the garage or other enclosed, non-habitable space, such as a storage shed." And the last one, Oxford, Ohio, they have had theirs since 2007. "No container should be stored in a front yard on a front porch." I like this. "Front yard, front porch, or directly adjacent to a front porch or a walkway." I don't know how they're doing. We went down there, and I didn't have a chance to tour the town when we went, but I just wonder. And I noticed a lot of these, the 75- And I noticed a lot of these, the 75, the 75, I picked these 25, several of these are recent. Sylvania just changed theirs. Kent, Baysville just changed theirs last year. Youngstown, 2015. So I think it's something that we really need, I don't want you to rush into this. I mean, even tonight, I don't know that you'd be talking about a compromise. I think you really need to study this thoroughly. But I really would like to challenge council to try and use your imagination and visualize walking through our streets throughout our town, both east and west side, without containers in the front. It can be done. Brian, you've done a wonderful job with the assistance of some east side folks, who get up at 7:30 in the morning and walk around, especially when the students come in August. And Brian really got on it, and he started knocking on doors, and when you go down the first block of Troop or South College, there are hardly any containers anymore. So, you know, I realize we have to do this every year, but it will benefit not just the east side, it'll benefit the entire city. It'll make a tremendous difference. And we will be implementing what the land use consultant recommended. We want to enhance the appeal of our town. That's it. Thank you.
Are there others that would like to address council?
Change of pace, although the trash can issue is an important issue. I'm not going to talk about trash cans.
Name an address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Ruth Babelsmith. My address is 628 South Main Street, Bowling Green.
Thank you.
Reason why I am here today is basically just to introduce myself to the council members, some of you I do know, some of you I do not know, some people in the room here I know, some I don't know. I am running for sheriff in the upcoming election, and I'm going around to the township meetings, city council meetings, village meetings, and doing exactly what I'm doing right now, just introducing myself to you so that you can get to know me and I can get to know you. I can address any brief questions you might have now. I can address longer questions later if you'd like, but that's why I'm here today, and unless anybody has any questions for me, that's all I have to say. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to address council? Seeing none, we will proceed with the reading of legislation.
There is no legislation for first reading, so we'll go right to second reading. Ordinance number 8515 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to apply for and execute an agreement for a loan through the Ohio EPA and/or OWDA Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund Program for the microfiltration membrane expansion at the water treatment plant. Ordinance number 8516 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to request qualifications and enter into a contract or contracts for engineering services, and to advertise for bids and execute a contract or contracts for the construction of the microfiltration membrane expansion at the water treatment plant. Ordinance number 8517 for second reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for the purchase and installation of an automatic transfer switch for the water treatment plant. Ordinance number 8518 for second reading. Ordinance vacating certain right-of-way in the vicinity of North College Drive and Bowling Green State University. Legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3627 for third reading. Resolution declaring the amount of taxes that may be raised by levy at the maximum rate authorized by law without a vote of the electors to be insufficient, and declaring the necessity of a levy in excess of such rate of 2.0 mils for parks and recreation purposes for the city of Bowling Green, Wood County, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. McComber.
I move to adopt Resolution 3627.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3627 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8509 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding salary schedule established.
President?
Mr. McComber.
Move that we adopt the ordinance 8509.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to comment, Mr. President, for everybody's benefit, that this ordinance provides raises for our employees that are not members of various unions. We have five unions that are associated with the city, but this provides raises for the non-unionized employees. I'm proud of the fact, actually, that in the 11 years I've been on council, that we have tried as hard as we could to treat our unionized, non-unionized employees exactly alike in terms of raises they've gotten. When one group's gotten nothing, the other group's gotten nothing. When one group gets 2% or 3%, the other group gets 2% or 3%. So this ordinance will provide the same percentage raise, 3% I believe, this year, for our non-unionized employees that our, that our unionized employees are enjoying also. The raises come at different times of the year, they're not all on exactly the same date, but in 2016, this simply means that all of our employees will be getting...
Thank you, Bob. Is there any further discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8509 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8510 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to sell obsolete items no longer needed for municipal purposes by public auction.
President?
Mr. McComber.
Adopt ordinance 851...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8510 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8511 for third reading. Ordinance accepting an easement for right-of-way purposes from the Christian and Missionary Alliance of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers?
I move to adopt ordinance 8511.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8511 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8513 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to accept utility easements located on inlots number 7192 and 7193 from American Title Agency Incorporated, and to vacate certain easements located on inlots number 7191 and 7192 on Meadowlark Lane.
I move to adopt ordinance 8513.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8513 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8514 for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Chapter 91 of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, regarding the cemetery.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gavron.
I move to adopt ordinance number 8514.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gavron?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
McComber?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 8514 is adopted. That concludes the items on this evening's agenda. Is there any other business to come before council? Seeing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second?
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.